Let's the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the board are here today with the exception of Mr. Thorpe, who is absent. Having a quorum, we will proceed. The report of the minutes from the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If no corrections, then amendments will stand approved as posted. We move on to unfinished business. Water quality testing is the first item. Received the latest results, there is nothing on the report that is detectable. So our water quality is absolutely excellent. And so we hope that's the way it stays. All right. The A R P discussion. So we've set aside money for the twelfth street project and other items. And we're not making any headway on spending our A R P money. So Mike, what do we have to do to get started on the twelfth street project?
For the sewer?
Yep.
Since you're in agreement, you got the fund, the funding's there.
Yes, and you know, the problem with this is, you know, W V U P is now asking the city to annex ninety-nine acres in there. Craig tells me that it will not stand the capacity increase. Now, and it's not going to increase overnight, so it's not like, you know, it's a crisis, but we need to get ahead of this.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
What's on you referring to, the twelfth street or the main line of Parkersburg?
Well, twelve street's the one that concerns me now.
Okay, yep.
I talked to the, I, we had a triple W meeting yesterday. I talked to the guy from the state of West Virginia again about replacing that bridge because of how deep that sewer is, sewer line is underneath of it. Brian said that he would take it back up the flagpole again to see if perhaps based on what I told him is coming and how we really can't do that. Twenty feet underneath an existing bridge, you know, they're going to look at it. I don't know if they'll do any good or not, but it doesn't matter. We need to, well, I mean, if that hundred home development's coming, I mean, obviously it won't come, but they want students up there next fall. So we need to, we need to get ahead of that one.
Yeah, we, we have the capacity to service their dorms and their college at this part of the time. But the subdivision they proposed is a different issue. And I've been working with Mike and we took some information out in the field, the sewer line, twelfth street, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth streets. Best way to get it back down is to our new line, which A R P is funding, so plus loan money. So I guess the question is, is if, if it's approved to state for the funding for that sewer line, then we need to go ahead and proceed with it. And we need to get this out the bit and go on. So we got to work around a bridge structure. I think he pretty well knows the engineering firm for that bridge, so it is them. And, you know, we can, if we got to deviate that, that sewer line outside that bridge, we do it, so.
So where's the next bridge?
The next bridge?
Well, if we shut down the twelfth street bridge for a while because of having a.
Ice tree. Ice tree.
Which is where this high rise, yeah, it's where the high rise is.
Or deviate down to thirteenth avenue down to traffic light.
Yeah.
Which we could open up the controls in that intersection and make a, right now, there's still on time basis. You can extend that time for people to exit out of that area, so.
I have a question. So I kind of got lost in what you were saying because my understanding, the first thing we were doing on the wastewater improvement system was the force main line. And then we had an earmark, which we haven't gotten yet, but allegedly a million dollar earmark to help with that project that exceeded a million dollars.
Yeah.
And we would have to come up with the remaining funding for that. But the twelfth street sewer replacement from basically the sewer lift station all the way up twelfth street, that's part of phase one. But we didn't, we don't have funding allocated, we do have funding, where is that funding from?
It's from B B. It's through the, that was the application we had sent in and they voted within the beginning of September.
Yeah, just had this pass.
Okay, I thought we talked about that at the last meeting that we, I don't know, I guess I got confused because.
They had tabled it.
Okay, that's.
Approved it in September.
Okay, maybe we should have started with the fact that we got that funding and then it'd been a lot clearer.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
That's kind of the, so that's some next line on it, so.
Okay.
At the force main, we got a bit out and we have the twelfth street project. Yep. Sorry, force main, Parkersburg upgrade. And the twelfth street project.
Twelfth street and then level.
Right.
To handle the new development, what must be done for twelfth street? Annexation. Russell's, Russell's all over that. As soon as he gets the stuff, he's got that one in.
It, it, it doesn't matter if annexation or not, it, it's coming. So I know which way it's going to flow, it's going to flow downhill to us. It, it, it doesn't matter if annexation or not, it, it's coming, so I know which way it's gonna flow, it's gonna flow downhill to us. It's like Windermere, so we, we gotta address that.
So if, if we would do twelfth street first, can we handle that without going to force main?
On dry weather days, yes.
Dry weather.
And if we, actually if we improve the seventeenth street at force, at gravity line up to seventeenth street and eleventh street, we could, we get a lot of eye on eye on that area and we can handle it. I don't know, we can't handle it. I mean, it, it's gonna be really touch and go. Uh, so that's why the extension and the upgrade will have to be the fifteenth, sixteen, seventeen, twelfth, or whatever you decide to do. Right now, the sewer line comes down, goes down, like, um, geez.
It goes clear over ninth street.
Yeah, that back around, I'm coming through. Yeah.
It's on a straight run up to twelfth street for whatever reason.
Which, you know, we could look at doing, but again, you know, they, they talk about eight hundred acres, what kind of development in there, they have not given me calculations on flows they're gonna need, because them sides are gonna do housing, condos, townhouses. We're gonna tie the sewer line in from the college into that particular subdivision, how it's gonna flow. I know there's some back properties, lift stations, water issues there.
Well, the other thing too is, there's still, that's ninety-nine acres, there's still a hundred and seventy-six more to go.
Correct, so
Okay, so you have to, you have to plan for future development in order to cover whatever is gonna be there.
That's what we're, so, that's what we've been working on, twelfth street area, how best we could have flow out of that area and down to the plant. So yes, we have to, definitely have to upgrade the line. Okay, and that line upgrade, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm gonna count as part of that feed and feed that subdivision, so. Public Service Commission five point. Right? So that would be our expense, cover their expense.
Say that again, please.
Uh, anytime anybody wants a sewer line, main line extension, what you would need in that subdivision, we're responsible for a certain amount of fee on that project, okay? Five time rule, what it is, anytime projected monthly income times five year projected growth, and that's what we'd be responsible for for upgrade, either we can spend in that subdivision or any upgrade we have to get to that subdivision. And the way I'm looking at it, we're upgrading twelfth street sewer line up in that area to get to that subdivision, so I'm using that money to cover our expenses we would have for that subdivision.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to see that rule, and I'm gonna have to have a better understanding of exactly what you're saying.
It's that public service, I like, main line extension rules. It's, it's online, I, I get your copy of it too.
I mean, you know, my, I, I'm all for that, you know, development there, I think that's great, housing, wonderful, perfect. But how much are, you know, the rate payers gonna pay in order for that, to bring those, you know, hundred plus, you know, whatever gets developed, a hundred lots plus whatever else gets developed? Versus the developer or
It doesn't matter if they, they come to the city or not, anytime, anytime anybody asks for a main line extension agreement, we have to, as a public service commission rules, we have to follow rate structures as to we can say, I'm gonna use examples, it takes a hundred thousand dollars to get to your subdivision and service your subdivision side. We have to pay example, uh, each resident, uh, I'll just make an easy number, a thousand dollars. That's our revenue base per year, okay? So we have to do five time rule, which is five years projected income. Or so sixty months, so if it's a hundred dollars a year, it's just six thousand dollars a year, so we have to reimburse them for that. They're doing no work, subdivision.
Basically, basically, we're, we have to set aside, when the developer develops, they put the pipes in, they project how much revenue those pipes are gonna generate for a five year period. The city is responsible for essentially reimbursing the developer for the amount of revenue that they would get those new hookups on the sewer system to the developer. So if it's, if it's number, if it's sixty houses and the revenue is a thousand dollars, it would be sixty, uh, over the course of the year, then it would be five years, five years, it'd be three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So the city is always, and that, and that matters regardless of whether the properties within the city will be, if it's in, in the utility quarter. If it's in our service area and they request it, even if it's outside of city limits, we'd still be responsible.
Zampa Windermere.
Yeah, that was before my time, I wasn't involved with anything, so I don't really know the backstory of Windermere, but
Elsta.
Mills, also.
So, I'm, I'm just saying, that's the general, generally, that's there's Mar Meadows, that is your time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, but that happened within the last five years, I know, we talked about it in here.
So we have to do the line upgrade, help service them, I can count that as lines to that subdivision.
Okay. Complicated, isn't it?
C L P P S E?
Yeah.
Anyway, you know it's coming.
No, and it needs to go out, and it needs to start working on that, and they have approached this, they have not made official requests, which I'm gonna request on them shortly. Uh, what they're gonna need in that subdivision. Correct. What type of sewer, what type
Brian said last night that he would have that to us.
Is that by, uh,
The fourth ward.
Okay, so.
So right now, we're steering the plan design, right? Still have not wrote specs, so proceed with that, and
So you know
I need to reform our request for that subdivision.
You know that over on fifteenth street, that guy, that developer is planning on building two houses.
Yeah.
Nothing of concern there.
Nothing of concern on that.
So if the developer on eighteenth street comes in with the ten houses, will that require any upgrade for the ten houses?
It all depends what size line out is and what type housing.
So you don't know?
You don't know.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right, well, we got good stuff coming, so we need to be ready.
Yeah, we can bring an agreement, explain to you.
Yeah.
We'll just need to get together how it's gonna find.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right, anything else on A R P? Can we go to the five year plan? Michael?
Yeah, do you say something?
The new five year plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the biggest change on that is the water. That's right, right?
Yes.
And that was, you know, we had talks, and we had gone into I G A C and requested funding. Rates were not high enough to be able to qualify for their financing. So, uh, we've had, Craig and I met, and we know for what other issues are still outstanding out there to see if we can get the rates, do a project, project big enough to get the rates where they need to be. And, uh, Craig had mentioned, uh, there's the line that goes basically from Sonic tanks over thirteenth avenue over to sixteenth street. And it creates a, a loop there, and the issues, uh, sixteenth street is, has issues with breaks on it.
That's correct, what that'll do is even more increase dependability in that area. If I increase the size of line, sixteenth street, replace the line, it, we've got numerous breaks on. That'll help with that flow getting even more from seven, eight uh, down to, I can service nine and ten area. Okay. Right now, there's still restrictions in that area, I can service them, but if there's a demand for high flow, I cannot. So with that line upgrade, which needs to be done anyway, we increase the size of that line, that would help out flow rate in that particular area. Remember when we had a presentation about forty fifth place? I made the presentation that sixteenth street is, is a high break area, and that's we increase size that line and, and help that flow in that area, get it back over to distribution of nine and ten and the tanks that are Sonic on.
So we can, let's go back for just a second. You and I had a conversation about the supply up at O V U. And you said that the tank up there was not big enough to supply all the improvements that you're estimating will come. Are you thinking of a tank replacement or installation of an additional tank?
I, again, I, I'm concerned about that flow rate at some houses. Uh, I know it's under two hundred thousand gallon capacity and an elevated tank. I talked to Mike, I said, you know, we, right now on our program, on our list, we have twentieth street booster station to feed the tank as a replacement project, needs to be replaced. And these new building, new pumps, uh, do we move that structure down to the new development off of twelfth street? And twentieth street?
Or how much flow am I gonna need?
Reference to fire protection and for whatever they decide to build that area, I don't know yet. So, but it does, uh, I'm, I am concerned about that, yes. So do we build a new tank, or do we do a plier system, or do we do a storage system? That's, it, again, I'm waiting for hickory numbers, and then we can look at the tank capacity well.
So we, we did the improvement on River Road, where we tied all three of the wells together.
Right.
Can we not push the water wherever we want it to go?
We can, it helps out. It's still needs additional upgrades, that's sixteenth street coming in. Don't get confused by the tank up on O V U because that's a completely different system. If that makes sense, I can supply the water from her main lines, but you're pumping water up to a two hundred thousand gallon, two hundred thousand gallon tank, which then distributes pressure wise out to Forest Hills and the college and part of that high line area. So right now, it serves the college and all Forest Hills. Now, if I build fifty houses out here, a two hundred thousand gallons completes really quickly. Okay?
The skated system won't adjust for it?
I have nothing to do with it, because skating, it pumps up, I mean, I, I can run pumps twenty-four seven, but that's not what you want. You want a storage capacity where you don't run your pumps constantly. If I did that, then we'd just go to a plier system, just turn the pumps on and let it run. So we, we have to look at that, there's a lot of calculations involved.
So is it one way or the other, the storage capacity was the best rate?
Yes, yeah, so, but will we need it? Where are the houses gonna sit? They set down at seven hundred elevation, I won't need it. They set seven twenty, my pressure's gonna drop down where I'm not gonna be able to supply adequate pressure. Will it meet the public service commission standard? Yes, so do we run the line up there and fit booster pumps in each house? Like Millstone should have been done, instead of one, or, you know, do we build a new tank or do we put plier systems in? There's a lot of things that we have to look at, because there's a, there's gonna be a check valve in that system somewhere where it's
But what's the tank in Millstone, a hundred thousand gallons?
Millstone is not, I mean, you have a tank at ground level, then you have a house at ground level, so it, it won't, it's like twenty-eight pounds of pressure in the upper houses. So we had to fit a booster pump in Millstone to boost the pressure to the houses.
That's a good tank up there.
A tank will, is good pressure for everybody else is like, it's a storage capacity for Central Boaz, uh, Rosemont Road, all that, okay? That's, that's your storage capacity. For pressure, that is not gonna, I, I count as a pressure tank. It does supply storage, five hundred thousand gallons. Elevated tanks where you elevate it up so you can get your pressure, half pound per foot, you know? Pressure getting down to the houses. Up, question, ounce, so. That's why it sticks away.
Okay, all right, you know all this stuff's coming and we need to get
We do, and we're working on, I'm working with Mike on it, we're
Another question, because it's kind of hard to follow along, because there's been a lot of conversation back and forth that you all have had, that, I mean, the board's not aware of, and certainly so I'm looking at the updated, um, five year plan here, that's in our packet.
Yeah.
Which project on this plan are you referring to?
Sixteenth street, is it on this one? Well, that's the sixteenth street, I might not, might not got to the newest one yet, but it's sixteenth street, and we had, like I said, like Mike said, we had to get the numbers up, so issue with bonds is, since our rates are so low, they don't want bonds, which is like three percent. Borrowing money out in the field, six percent. If you raise the demand, how much are you gonna need, which we, we'll be doing sixteen street and a couple million dollars to it. Back down to three percent, because then it'll last a part of the money, but they won't last a part of the money now because the rates are so low.
Okay.
So.
So we have to add sixteenth street to, to the project because of all this stuff that's going to be developed on the O V U property?
No, sixteen street needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I understand that.
So we have, we, they're that project in there, so we're gonna borrow another million dollars, which puts it above threshold where that allows us to go at lower interest rate. We'd actually save money by doing sixteen street project.
Okay, so I'm trying to follow along, and so if I have an updated list that we can, you know, if this can be updated, I really wish we would have had it before the meeting so we could be better prepared today.
I'll forward, we'll make sure we get the copy forward, I thought this was a new one, so, I thought Laura had got it.
You know, I kind of, I just feel a little bit blind on not, in trying to participate in this conversation, because we don't know what's going on.
But adding a new project, how much add, how much does it add to us, Mike?
We're at nine point two million.
Yeah, and how much was it before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we actually saved money.
Well, I get it, I mean, it's all, it's, you know, this is the back of the cocktail kind of, you know, figuring of what we're talking about, and we, you know, we don't have the hard numbers on it, so I'm, you know, trying to get a understanding here.
Yeah, Kevin, to go over the whole project again, so the first phase originally was gonna be the small diameter water main improvements. So we added in the water main reinforcements, which were in the original plan as phase two. Uh, the thirteenth avenue, sixteenth street, which is what Craig's talking about. And then we also added in some different valve replacements, uh, versus issues that Craig was having to deal with.
Okay. That makes it a lot more clear, thank you very much. And, because I, I do keep this, I always have this on me, I always refer to it, and so you guys had me super confused a few minutes ago.
All right. Water and wastewater system improvements project, anything else?
We may, might want to switch that next time, all right, so.
Yeah, I, I, the only thing I was gonna say, if you know, once we get the water straightened out, we do have to go back to I G A C and redominate, so we'll get you that and make sure we get it on next, agenda's approved, be able to send that, yeah.
Can you also update this, or, you know, so we can, what you guys are, so that we can know what's going on?
Oh, Craig, you need another presentation or what?
Hey, we can do that.
Okay. Uh, dredging upon running the dry dams.
What, what, what are you to do that? Uh, wish we could have had it down, but we're still waiting on the funding, so.
I did notice you guys did an excellent job on the dry dams in Greenmont Hills.
Yeah.
Those things look better now than they have for a long time.
So does a pond run, and, uh, again, I want to thank the city for, you know, we, this year, we was allowed to purchase a, a new flail mower. Different, we had a brush hog in front of the top of the escalator, went out, it, it, it did cut the grass, but the new flail mower, it's a lot lighter, a lot easier to handle, we're getting a lot more mowed, and it, pond run looks great, mowed. Uh, it takes half the time it usually did, so it's, it's worked out really well, so, uh, or a a minimal investment that the city made was five thousand dollars or less, but, uh, they did a great job. We, we mowed down the pond run, we mowed a lot of the road like around Woodland, we mowed Spencer's Landing, mowed for the fire department, we mowed for the parks, so, so it's, it's worked out really well and helped us out a lot, so.
Okay. Twenty-eighth street storm drainage improvements, phase one, Mike?
We have talked with, um, D E B on what they're requiring. We have talked with, um, D E P on what they're requiring, requiring from us, we need, there's a few things we have to get in, but, um, and we still look to get that in by the end of the year, so. Getting first year and starting next school year, or between the two years.
So, we had the discussion last night about a possible building being built in the field there, uh, across from the community building. Alright, where is the actual pathway to enter into on run?
As designed now, it's close to thirty, thirty-fourth street.
How deep is that?
Forty.
Nah, six foot.
We covered?
Oh yeah, absolutely, cause if you're gonna do that complex, you probably need to put two or three foot of fill in there anyway, just to bring it up to the level of sidewalk, and that would actually help that pipe out. Um, and I know this is, um, that particular project, I, I don't see why we couldn't possibly do it in the house. But that's just, we need to get that pipe up to that, and we could tie into it, catch space. City workers could install that pipe and, and backfill it, uh, so.
How big a diameter is that gonna be, thirty inch?
I thought it was five foot, so.
Five foot.
Yeah, or, or the main ones, yes.
Yeah. So. I mean, right now, it's, it'd be pretty shallow for us to dig, then we get that pipe in, then start filling dirt over top of it, so, that would help us out a lot. But we'd have to get that done, I don't think we'd have it, I don't think we could wait. If you wanna progress that build, I don't think we can wait until we get that funding, so.
Right, I got it, yeah, you know, but the thing of it is, it's ridiculous, okay? You get a grant, but you can't wait on them, so you go ahead and do the project, and then you get it done, and then you expect to get reimbursed, and it's like, they look at you and say, hey. You didn't need our money, you got it done on your own. I mean, it's, you can't win. But, I mean, I, that project down there, if, if we can work the details out, I think it'll go.
Well, I understand, but there's, there were some cost sharing in that project anyway, so.
Okay.
Right? I mean, the grant went for a hundred percent of it. It wasn't for a hundred percent of it, so, we could take that, our section out of that, anyway, so.
If I recall, part of the A R P money is assigned for that project right there, so. Yeah. Okay. So we could spend our money. Wow. Okay, lead service line inventory.
We are, not as much as we require to do, and it, uh, Semedo was ready to go, uh, federal level, uh, and state level, once they come back, change everything back during July, but, uh. We have completed that, and it's all in Mike's hands, and just waiting for, and Semedo, which should be next week or this week.
Well, you're not allowed to go on vacation till you get that done, pretty simple.
Has to be done by October. Yeah, so.
Yeah, we have everything, it, it's, it's ready to burn out, it's just, you have to get, log in, some, whatever the, yeah, the portable that they have created.
Are they, and I don't recall this specifically, are they recall, are they requiring updates, periodical updates on your lead service lines? I mean, I know we did the survey, but they changed the rules two or three times.
Got field verified, that are unknowns, now we have to start field verifying everything, make sure it's not unknown any.
Within three, within three years, you have to have the whole thing completed, and then within ten years, you can have that service.
Okay.
Some areas, it's, we did not get a survey result back, or we have not truly dug up their service line, customer service line, depending on what they had, or inside their houses, so.
Okay.
Alright, additional staff, it's gonna be unfunded, so. Before we quit that, you guys need to give a, around a, a handout to Tommy and Lori, because they did a lot of work on that. Tommy wrote, or wrote program spreadsheets on that, and it was, uh.
Great job, Tommy.
And Lori, so.
Good job, Lori. Good job. Okay. Alright, what about a skater update?
Jeez. What'd they say, Mike?
Uh, let's see, what was the last one? They, they're losing all their people to the new core facility. They promised two weeks.
Wasn't that what you said last month?
I called Mike this week, I told him, get ahold of him, cause I am tired of him not being here. Uh, Mike sent an email, could see he's an engineer, and I was hoping they would not, uh, get up here and complete this project, we just wanted to kick them off of our project and proceed to somebody else. It's been a year, and, um, they come back with the email saying, hey, I work on it today, the guy's up there, which he was not up here, okay, so, uh.
Seventh of October, we have the seventh.
Yeah, so, I'm not pleased, uh, I understand about employee conditions, I deal with it every day, but, uh, you've had ample time to complete this project, so.
Have we paid them any money?
It's a good question, I think I paid partial payments on the materials that we received, so. Yeah, I've received materials in the sewer department, some, um, cellular networks in our, our lift stations. We have control boards that we don't feel belong here, and they don't know what they're for, and it's just, we don't have our computers, we don't have our computer screens, we don't have our programs, and nothing in the water department, so.
And what's your timeline?
Two weeks ago, my timeline was.
No, but I mean, how soon, what, what day did you say you were gonna pull the plug?
They said October, be ready to install week to seven. We will schedule everything else to be finished by then and be able to set everything up by the end of that week, so the week of seven.
So next month's meeting, you should come in and say, hey, this ain't working great?
If it doesn't.
Yeah.
Alright. How about this one, this'll be a good one, this'll make you happy, okay? The meter replacement project.
And we are doing an outstanding job with that, cause the city employees are doing it, uh, they're moving right along, the guys have been great in the field, uh, the supply's here, it's in the garage. So, um, we ran in a couple of little issues, you had to buy risers for meter pits and things like that, but the guys are, are knocking them out, uh.
Yeah, by risers, meter heads taller than the existing one?
No, the, the, over time, these pits sink in the ground, so, and actually, that's been a delay for us, because some of them we can't find, we've had to take melodecters out, look through the yards, cause people put flyer planters over top of them. Driveways over top of them, I mean, we just all over the place, so, and, you know, it's a great thing about the system we had, we didn't have to go out and actually inspect, or actually manually read these things, so. For ten years, they've been sitting there working, and we've never had really addressed it, so people's pit flyer, and like I said, built driveways and, and all kinds of things, so it's been difficult for us to find some of them, but. We've, we've had to raise some up, get them back up to grade, uh, where they've settled, so. Dennis, Dave, Ryan, uh, we hired a new individual, he's worked on that, been doing a great job, hey, that's all they do, uh, when there's not water leaks, but, uh, we've had a few of them. It's not from a lack of maintenance on the water leaks, it's most, these water leaks have been caused by gas company, they've been hitting my service lines, which I'm not giving guys crap, cause they've, they've done a great job, okay, so. Uh, but they have hit, which we had shut mains down, once, when you shut a main down. When you turn that main back on, there's always something else out there, it's lost pressure, and it'll pop, it might not be today, but it'll pop, you know, but. So I, I think we have finished everything up on Seventh Avenue, around forty-seventh street, Sixth Avenue, uh, we officially replaced the whole line, cause we've had eight leaks in the last two years, so that's. We replaced our last eight-foot piece of transite that was in there, so hopefully that'll get fixed and taken care of, but, uh, you know. I had to talk with the guys, I told them, advised the guy to vape, from here on out, we need to start when these lines break, and we have to shut the lines down, examined on Grand Central this past week, we should be installing valves while that line is down. I got it in the report, and I'll go ahead and talk about it if you want, or you wanna wait, about line and gas company.
I have a meeting, I gotta be out.
Okay, well, yeah, and that's been long, but. Gas company did hit ma- our line on Grand Central, Forty-second Street. I just met with them day, day before that, and they're gonna replace the gas line down Forty-second Street, Grand Central down, go towards west, west is Dead End Street. I met with them, went over the road details, what they had to replace, uh, that is one of our lines that scheduled the low, uh, inch galvanized line has been replaced, it's gotta be replaced, so. We are working with the gas company in that particular area, they're gonna remove the concrete, they're gonna lay their gas line, we're gonna come through in-house, lay a new water line down that street. It serves the six houses, we're on two-inch line down, make new taps, tie everybody back in, put blow off at the end, and, um, we've agreed to split the costs of. The new road that's gonna be put back in, and what it is, I'm gonna buy the concrete, they're gonna report, so it, it works out good, uh, so they've been good to work with, so. They have agreed to that, so we'll get that new, they will mark that and off the list, we don't have to do later on, so, okay.
Well, it's nine and ten.
We have a reconstruction meeting Wednesday in my office, um, so they can get started, the first phase with that will be replacing the pumps. And painting the structures and new roofing, and, um, they have ordered electrical panels, and when they come in. Six, seven months down the road, then they'll come back and install the new electrical panels, but. We can steer work, the new pumps off the existing electrical panels. So, we'll do one pump at a time, so you won't see any, um, delay in production water down there, cause we don't run one well at a time anyway, so.
So that concludes our new business, um, I mean, our old business, our new, we have no new business today, so your abbreviated manager's report?
Abbreviated, yeah.
I mean, you surely can't have anything else to talk about.
You'd think that, wouldn't you? Uh, couple things going on in my department, uh, today, I got eight people off. Okay, so, um, it's, we've had this problem all summer, uh, vacation, sick, now, right now, we're, we're hitting. Two or three people off, cause the flu, COVID flu issues, we got people sick all over the building, um, people are sick working, so it's, we've been doing the best we can, so. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, work's being completed out in the field, um. Like I said, we talked about the leaks caused by gas company, it's, we're addressing them as it happens, uh, they've been great to work with, so. They don't want to do it on purpose, like some companies come through and rip out, have actually missed a lot of my lines, so they did them pretty good. Uh, flushing of hydrants will, uh, commence the first week of October, or we'll post that next week, so, uh. That'll, uh, finish up the year for that, uh, there is some paving coming, the city was gracious enough to do additional three hundred thousand dollars. For paving, um, there is two, five roads that we're gonna do, um, so I give you the map, um, I'm just gonna go with you guys, if you guys happen to live in areas, or. This is nowhere near where we're gonna be putting new water lines or new sewer lines, anything like that, but, uh, fifty-seventh street, third avenue, second avenue. Uh, twenty-seventh street from seventeenth avenue to the dead end section. Twenty-third street from thirteenth avenue to up around sixteenth avenue, around half, partial way around the curve. We'll be milling, replacing that, uh, thirteenth avenue from fourteenth to seventeenth street, but, uh, not the intersections, the intersections are concrete, so we won't be doing them. And, uh, tenth street from Grand Central to the dead end by side, uh, Wellfield nine and ten, has never been paved by us, so. That come in, estimate a cost of three hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars, using all that three hundred thousand dollars.
It was two ninety-nine this morning when we talked.
Yeah, we had some millings into it, so.
Oh, brother.
I was gonna do partial milling, and I'm gonna.
Two hours ago, now about eight thousand dollars.
Can I get a copy of that, please? That list, I appreciate it.
Yeah. You want a copy of the drawing?
I have the map, I know, that you gave us before, but this is the updated paving, I don't think I have that, and I, I have a particular person that's asked about some paving in that area, so I wanna be able to follow up with her.
Where at?
Um, down on Third Avenue, uh, like fifty-seven, fifty-seventh and Third Avenue.
Oh, okay, for the, about the curb you're talking about, in that area?
No, 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 it's.
Yeah, that lower section is really bad, and we're gonna pave that section, so, yeah, okay.
Three oh.
This, next week.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred seven thousand eight hundred dollars. They will be flushing the G A C fillers through eleven, through fourteen next week, so, uh, so, just to flush them out, uh.
Much of it, how much of a mess, and how much time is that gonna take?
Eh, it takes one to two days, and it's, and, cause I gotta do low flow in that area.
Tractor trailer in down there, or how are we gonna do that?
What's that?
Is there gonna be a tractor trailer in down here?
Nah, they're just gonna back flush the carbon, so.
Don't they have a tanker to pull that stuff out?
Nah, they don't, they flush back out through the sewer system, so, when they change carbon.
Just wanna give Greenmont a heads up if you're gonna have that.
If they're gonna change carbon, that's when they bring semis in, so they're not gonna change carbon. Public Works is working on the new bathroom facility at McDonough Corporation, or McDonough Park, uh, working on bid specs on that, so try and finish it up. And we're also working on a new rec complex over, uh, for Jackson Middle School. They were writing, try to write specs and getting information on that, so.
I have a question about that, um, McDonough bathroom. When I was up there, that concrete pad looks like it's in pretty bad condition, they're gonna be able to repair that in order to.
Dishes there, so we're moving all the concrete, making a wider handicap accessibility, and putting extra green, and on the outside, both currently washing the bathrooms. And there's only like one or two downspouts in the whole building, so we're putting additional downspouts in each corner, run to the outside drains, which is gonna circle the new concrete.
Very good.
There'll be epoxy floor put in, uh, everything be A D A compliant, uh, new doors, uh, new siding, new roofing, uh, new lighting. System, so, uh, right walls, that'll be A D A compliant.
Yeah, that's an exciting project, and I, I mean, I'm thrilled that that's gonna happen.
Actually, when I talk to Steve up there, we're actually gonna replace that little section of grass where the sign is, we're gonna make it all concrete, and put a more permanent sign there of metal structure. And, uh, make them signs more permanent, build it to that metal structure, so. The lighting will be changed, it'll be more lighting on the outside of the building, plus new L E D lighting on the inside, it, the lights that come up. Center roof, that's gonna go away, it's gonna be put on a pole where by the, uh, mercy telephone, so in that particular area.
Good.
New conduit, new like, so, okay. I know we haven't had rain this summer, so it's all gonna, it's all next week, so, for seven days, it's, we're up, it's four to five inches rain predicted, so. Yeah, so. There's so many cracks and dirt now, I think it'll rain like eight inches now. So, uh, I have seen pitches this year that we dug ten years ago that are settling. So I, it's really odd, I've, I haven't before, so, ground is just dry, cracked, so. Uh, we are gonna seed, reseed Monday, send the crews down to. There, areas that we're gonna try to reseed and straw before the rain gets on, so they'll try to start seeding up. There's only a few left, so. That's it.
Questions for Craig? I mean, you've already run off. Steve, if we lose one more, we no longer have a quorum.
Yeah, well, yeah. Boring stuff is boring, I understand.
Questions?
Yeah. I'm going to take my questions offline with you because we, I, yeah, you had me super confused today, but we'll get it worked out.
Yeah, I, I understand because, yeah, but I'll go over with you, the Public Service Commission rules and the five point one and so.
I have.
I'll print them off for you and you can review them, or you can look them online and understand. I can explain to you how it works. There's certain criterias you got to use if something isn't, but.
Sure.
Russell? Lori? Last chance there. Fantastic. Mike? Okay, it's your job. Lead service line before vacation.
Absolutely.
You got that note? Okay, all right. You adjourned.